Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It is seven oh two on Monday. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sherman, if you'd lead us in the opening prayer.
Forward guys, our decisions tonight that we make the right decisions for the city of Nelsonville and protect everybody from the COVID. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. All the rules, please.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Everyone have a chance to review the minutes from the June twenty ninth special meeting?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? Do we have anybody?
Pulling it up right now. I don't see any at this time.
All right, well, we'll, uh... Business and organizational comments.
We had a finance committee on the ninth. If anyone wants to tune in and watch it, it was on July ninth.
Okay.
Call on committee discussion.
Yeah, we're on committee discussion.
Uh, we had police and fire meeting. Talked, uh, a little bit about some of the COVID issues. And talked to the police chief about some of his ideas and plans.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nope.
All right.
I think we need a utility meeting soon, Greg.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go like...
Can we get this this week maybe?
Do we do six tomorrow?
No, no. Well, we got...
Okay, you can't get to...
We have mayor's court Wednesday, if I recall correctly.
Fair Wednesday, yeah.
Or Wednesday.
We think it's Thursday.
Can you do Thursday?
So...
Would it be possible to get a police and fire committee as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Will you be here?
When do you need it?
Thursday would be good, if possible.
Okay.
Talk to the chief about some of his emergent needs.
Okay.
We're doing actual utility needs, so I have that at eight.
Okay, seven, eight? It is.
You do Thursday?
Thursday. All right.
Can you get a press release out?
Thank you. Fire department update?
Yep. I'm texting our press office right now.
Nice utility. You guys are gonna talk about the contract, contract.
All right, um... Grants that are currently open right now in the fire department, we have the two thousand nineteen AFB grant, which this is for Mark's pagers and fire apparatus headsets.
They're too close to your phone.
My phone is not... Uh, the Bureau of Worker Compensation Firefighter Cancer Awareness Grant. This man brings the firefighter protective hoods and structural firefighting gloves. I currently have the two thousand twenty Fire Marshal Equipment Grant that's open right now. That is for replacement fire attack orders. We might not get this one. It is definitely needs based. Usually if there's any type of budget with a municipality, it's, it's not a worry. Currently looking into non FEMA federal funds through Flagler Emergency Services. This grant could be used for equipment, PPE vehicles, and building construction. Currently looking at some CARES fund, this is current virus relief fund money. Just actually working with the city manager on some stuff for some advanced EMS training for the crew. The two thousand twenty FEMA grant will be in August, and I'll be submitting for that one as well. I have, actually firefighter Briggs came to me. He's working on a private company um, grant right now for some more protective equipment. He's actually out of town right now, so I don't have that information. And to talk a little bit about the, uh, the EMAs federal funding with CARES. There's a lot of opportunity there, so myself, Scott, and along with the police chief are working on some stuff through that. On duty crew members have been tagging, geotagging fire hydrants in the city with the software that the fire department has, or actually mark tagging the course of each hydrant and any issues that might we have, might, might have with those hydrants, and doing some proper, you know, maintenance as far as brush and weeds as we see fit. So you see crew members up doing that. EMS calls are back. We're starting to pick it up now in the community. The fire department has strict safety protocols in place concerning COVID nineteen protective clothing route. We are tracking active cases where they didn't use members when we done the call, just making aware of exactly what's going on, where it's going on. Fire inspections have begun to slowly pick back up. COVID nineteen sanitation requirements has pretty much limited any type of re-inspections or yearly inspections uh, across the region. So we're starting to pick on, back up on that now. Fire EMS runs have served an increase. Most of our runs are EMS calls. We are starting to increase back to pre-COVID nineteen levels. And we're twelve runs behind right now, according to what we heard this time last year. For quite a while, nobody had any runs because everybody was afraid to call nine one, they were afraid to go to the hospital. So we're starting to see that pick up now. Donor of the Valley was a good, was a great success. We have many people donating, uh, the vendors that donated money, the companies that donated money to Chamber. We had fire department crew members, Hamburg employees, Hocken College, police department, and Nelsonville Police Department all work together to promote a safe environment as far as COVID nineteen regulations go. We have the, we're in need of complaints, so everything went well. Uh, last week, we on the river, the utility department, fire department crew members, and couple supervisors removed a large tree that was snapping on a water line in the river. We performed that task while the utility department was curiouslying that water line to see how could be repaired and get it repaired easily. Uh, this year, the cancellation of Parade of Hills. We're going to cancel the fire department water bottle this year. There's no way we can do this safely to promote social distancing and a clean sanitary environment. Without Parade of Hills, the water bottles, you know, it's kind of a new issue. We currently have one new volunteer firefighter candidate. He started fire class last weekend. As soon as he's done with that class, he will transition into a firefighter one class and an EMT class here around the August, August timeframe. The minority crews are starting to use the properties on Elm Rock for training. Uh, we've used those in the past for training. We'll start utilizing them more now. And we've actually been working with the police department on some active shooter training, uh, with their department, which they'll make the plans for that. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
I know we have one person.
I know we have at least one.
Okay.
As soon as we get free, it's imperative that my department and the police department actually, uh, starts promoting civil service testing for our departments. We've exhausted our list.
They can function too.
Can?
Yeah.
Um, those lists are good for two years. We've exhausted that list. We need to bring another employee list. And that's all I have?
Thanks, sir.
Very good.
All right. Solo service. No, solo service.
Who is it?
Well, I know who it is. Yeah, how can you make them jealous? Cause I think if I get that testing done soon.
You just do it under other...
We can do it towards the end of the meeting.
All right, ordinance forty-eight dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance number forty-eight eight dash twenty, an ordinance accepting a six thousand dollar donation from Rocky Boots and appropriation the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars for Aquatic Center Fund number three hundred, the line item number three hundred dash eight hundred dash three three zero two zero pool repairs. Whereas, the city desires to thank Rocky Boots for its six thousand dollar donation to be used for Aquatic Center repairs. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, the city accepts the generous donation from Rocky Boots of six thousand dollars to be used for the Aquatic Center repairs. Two, there is hereby appointed, appropriated from the unappropriated balance of the Aquatic Center Fund number three hundred, the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars to line item number three hundred dash eight hundred dash three three zero two zero pool repairs to be used for Aquatic Center repairs. Three, the total appropriations are decreased by said amount. Four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Councils.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Go to the top. Oh, do we need to do that? Here we go.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rocky Boots. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rocky Boots.
Yes. I believe that was for a pool pump, correct, Scott?
Absolutely. We use it to re... Well, it wasn't brand new, cause there was a six to eight week lead time, even though the brand new pump was the same as rebuilding. We would have liked to get a new pump, cause, uh, the rebuilding... Unfortunately, those parts are rare to come by, so that's why it was the same price, so, uh, in the future, possibly next year or the year after, I would like to budget in a new, modern pump that's easily rebuildable with current parts, just so we don't get caught in this situation again.
But now with the pool in a positive way.
Absolutely.
Let's stick to the ender, you can...
You betcha.
Ordinance forty-nine dash twenty. Someone to introduce it.
Orders.
Ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty, an ordinance amending the appropriations ordinance to appropriate funds for police and fire operations. Whereas, the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate and decrease funds for the police and fire departments. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated balance the following sums. Nine hundred nine dollars from Capital Improvement Fund number six hundred to line item number six hundred dash six hundred dash six seven five nine six fire department equipment. Two thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars from General Fund number one, Fund number one hundred to line item number one hundred dash two hundred dash four zero zero one zero operating supplies. Two thousand five hundred dollars from tree trimming expenses from General Fund number one hundred to line item number one hundred dash sixty-five dash four one one nine park recreation tree expense. Fifteen thousand dollars from General Fund number one hundred to line item number one hundred dash one four zero zero one zero operating supplies. Fifteen thousand dollars from General Fund number one hundred to line item number one hundred dash one oh one dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. Four thousand dollars from General Fund number one hundred to line item number one hundred dash one zero one dash one zero zero two zero O P E R S. And one thousand dollars from General Fund number one hundred dash one zero one dash one zero zero five zero Medicare. Two, the folly appropriations are decreased. Five thousand dollars from line item number one hundred dash one hundred dash one zero zero one zero salaries and wages. Two thousand five hundred dollars from line item number one hundred dash one hundred dash one zero zero one three overtime. Five thousand dollars from line item number one hundred dash one hundred dash one zero zero one three medical. And two thousand five hundred dollars from line item number one hundred dash one hundred dash one zero zero seven zero longevity. Three, the total appropriations are increased slash decreased by said amount. Four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
I got a question. Uh, what is the fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund for operating supplies and fifteen thousand dollars for salary and wages?
That's for the meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
The, uh, uh, which one of, so we're looking at...
The fifteen, the fifteen grand from general fund item line out one hundred to the operating supplies and the salaries and wages.
So the operating supplies is coming from all the decreased line items, so that's where the new police chief is taking savings he's making from the areas they're decreasing to increase operating supplies because prior administration has spent it all, and he needs to spend money to hire new officers. Costs around four thousand to hire new. The fifteen thousand for one hundred one oh one is simply where part-time officer budget, part-time police budget had been spent completely, even though it's only July. And he needs, we estimated, that much money to get through the rest of the year, the year with part-time officers.
And that was cut in half in the finance committee.
And the opers, that's the same, that's the same.
Yeah, anything where you see the second line of numbers saying one oh one, that's where part-timers
Gotcha.
uh, basically funding to keep the part-time officers employed through the rest of the year.
Good night, good night.
Well, on the, the, the wages one, that was cut in half in the finance committee in December. So we expected that would have to be supplemented for the year without.
Yeah, there's seventy-five hundred dollar corporation in there for the uniforms.
That's included in the fifteen thousand.
Yes, that's included in fifteen thousand, yeah. He's expecting between that and, it costs, it costs a lot to hire a new officer, three to four thousand dollars, so we think it'll cost around that for all of them.
Okay, just asking.
Yes.
Just curious.
Yep. I know it's a long convoluted thing. It was nice that the chief came to Scott or myself first, I can't remember who, but he said he wanted to move that money instead of just ask council for more money to get these guys hired, so it was nice and proactive action on his part.
All right.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Go to the top. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yeah.
All right, ordinance fifty dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance number fifty dash one, an ordinance authorizing a six-month contract for the city manager to be renegotiated for January two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the city desires to give its city manager a six-month contract to be renegotiated for January one, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, that the city manager is hereby given a six-month contract at the rate of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, a year with family dental, and a benefit offered to other city employees. This contract will be renegotiated for January one, two thousand twenty-one. Two, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven three one point three oh because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the new city manager contract can be implemented as soon as possible during the construction project, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
There's a clerical change, man. Delete the, the emergency during construction.
Can I ask a question for you, Gary?
Sure.
Just for implementation. It says dental, but also all benefits offered to other employees. Dental's already offered to other employees.
I believe the, the note I got from Carlos said that he was entitled to the, the, uh, nothing for not taking the rest of the general insurance, so...
What all you needed, correct, other than dental? He just wasn't sure.
So not taking the other, I, my guess is, like, that comment, it's available to him. If he doesn't take it, he's gonna get that stipend that we pay, what is it, two thousand dollars or something? The stipend we pay minus what the premium is for the insurance, general insurance.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, yeah, it's just a little different than how we do it with other folks, but...
Well, yeah, but it's, but, you know, it's a separate contract.
I just wanna make sure.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
Ordinance. Ordinance.
On the holster stem?
On this one, yeah.
It's in the cabinet?
Ordinance number fifty-one dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for twenty-four Fulton Street to be used as a parking lot for the Aquatic Center, an adjacent parking lot, and declaring an emergency. Whereas, Frederick L. Wakehorst?
Sound great.
As trustee of the Frederick L. and Sally A. Wakehorst Living Trust of offered, have offered to rent for one dollar, the parking lot at twenty-four Fulton Street to be used as parking for the Aquatic Center and adjacent parking park. Whereas, the city of Nelsonville wishes to thank Frederick L. and Sally A. Wakehorst for the generous donation of parking for the Aquatic Center and adjacent park. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, the city manager is authorized to lease for, should it be twenty-four? Twenty-four Fulton Street to be used as parking for the Aquatic Center and adjacent park in accordance with Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Two, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven three one point three oh because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the parking lease can be implemented as soon as possible for the summer swimming season, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Three seconds, Dunphy. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, I forgot to put it in the ordinance, but I think council ought to go on record as thanking, uh, these individuals for basically donating the furniture for the summer season. Absolutely.
I, I was gonna say that too, so thank you to the, is it Wake, Wake?
Wakehorst.
It actually is in here.
Yeah. Is it in or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Wonderful.
That is very, very nice.
Very good. That's always been a problem, the lack of parking. So, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Folks, just because we're having the technical issues, will you please speak into the mic?
Gotcha.
Thank you, sir.
All right, ordinance fifty-two dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
Please.
Ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sew Reflection System and declaring an emergency. Whereas, replacement of fourteen hundred feet of the old forest main along Borough Boulevard that is a routine maintenance problem needs to be replaced. Whereas, there are sufficient contingency funds in the Nelsonville City contract of the Phase One Regional Collection System to fund this change order with the current financing. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, the city manager is authorized to execute change order number three for Phase One of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System for one hundred eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars in accordance with Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Two, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven three one point three oh because the immediate passage of this ordinance is necessary so that the change order can be implemented as soon as possible during the construction project, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance number fifty-three dash twenty, an ordinance creating the CARE Act Fund number nine twenty and appropriating from the unappropriated balance of the CARE Act Fund the sum of seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and seven cents. Whereas, the federal CARE Act has made monies available to states to distribute to local government for financial assistance with COVID nineteen expenses. Whereas, Nelsonville has received seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and seven cents. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, the sum of seventy-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and seven cents is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated balance of the CARES Act Fund. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall be effective at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
So this is money that came from the legislation that we approved earlier?
That's correct.
And this is just so far?
So far.
So...
This is, this is the, uh, Nelsonville share of the first distribution.
Well, thank you, Miss, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Hunter, for bringing that legislation on earlier to make us qualified for this.
Agreed.
That's seventy-four thousand dollars that we will have. It's a lot of money.
Can I ask two questions? Can we make sure that it's named the CARES Act or it won't match the naming of the federal act?
That's fine. It's type great.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
So add an S?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the second thing, I just wanna make sure, it says appropriate from the unappropriated balance. Technically, the fund doesn't have a balance yet, so should this ordinance also give it? Transfer it, I mean?
No, that's the, it's, it's the same as money coming into the city. It has to be appropriated. It's the same as income tax money that coming into the city. So you appropriate, you appropriate it from an unappropriated balance? You have the money in hand, it becomes an unappropriated balance, some of money.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you're good there. Cause I think the state's gonna have a lot of oversight over this, so I just wanna make sure it's kosher.
Good question. All right. Motion to sus, do we do a motion to suspend?
Uh, no.
Motion to suspend?
Yeah, I'll watch that.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes. Motion to adopt, second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four dash twenty. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce.
I would love to open this. Ordinance fifty-four dash twenty. An ordinance declaring a real and present emergency to purchase an electric submersible pump to deal with a sewer problem and authorizing the city manager to sign a contract. Whereas, there was a direct discharge of sewage into the Hawking River requiring an emergency purchase of an electric submersible pump without bids to fix the direct discharge. Whereas, said purchase should be payable out of the monies for the new sewer plant. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, city council declares a real and present emergency pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section seven-three-five-point-oh-five-one because there was a direct discharge of sewage in the Hawking River violating EPA rules which had to be fixed immediately. And therefore, this ordinance being adopted by a two-thirds vote of all the members elected here to ratify the contract of the city manager entered into an agreement, entered into a contact, contract with Ohio Cat for eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents? Should that be? Fifty cents without bidding to purchase an electric submersible pump. Two, this ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven-three-one-point-three-oh because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the purchase of the electric submersible pump can be paid as soon as possible. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption duly enacted by council on first reading, to say, under suspension. Under suspension on the thirteenth day of July two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
So this pump was used already in that huge sewer line issue that you guys had?
It was in the hole that was behind Advanced Auto and the body shop and the repair shop down there. So we were able to put that in there to avoid, it kind of reads weird, but we didn't actually discharge into the river, this prevented that from happening.
It prevented it, so that avoided an EPA issue?
Absolutely.
So this pump, just a real quick question, because I'm not... It will be taken care of, correct?
Right, so it's actually a huge addition. So this is a win for the city all the way around. So we got the pump in time to avoid any threats from EPA, not threats, but, you know, harm to the environment. So we avoided harm to the environment by getting this in literally within hours. We were driving all over the place trying to get it. And on top of that, the city will be able to use it in the future. And it's a lot more efficient than our current diesel pumps because it runs on electricity. And we have a very quiet generator, heavy-duty generator. So in the future, flooding problems and such, this will be a great addition to the fleet.
So, and it looks like it says it will be able to use the money for the sewer plant to cover this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Motion to suspend? Yeah, this is just a cleanup ordinance because of emergency purpose.
Right, gotcha.
And this situation might come up again. This is one of those, we were in it and we were already three days behind. And it just, it was due or postponed the project even more, which was upwards of, I think it's fourteen thousand dollars a day for delay right now, so.
Not the problem.
Okay.
All right, second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, second.
Sorry, I couldn't hear who that was.
Notice me. Oh, he motioned, I second.
Room changing.
It sounds...
I have more hair.
Plus, I see you guys are room changing.
More people like this, yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, we're to the city manager's report.
All right, so we have lots of stuff going on around the city. Specifically with our sewer line, we are opened up at the end of Chestnut Street, adding the line coming down Chestnut. We've hit a delay right now. It's, there's intermingled lines that nobody knew about, we've tied into. And currently, we're working solutions to make sure that the sewage is pumped down and that the contractor can get moving again. We are facing a continuous problem with our pump in the very basement of the sewer plant. It's a really old pump, but anytime debris gets in there, it reduces the pumping capacity significantly. So that's something that we've been battling up and down. We're trying to get through without purchasing another pump, but I just wanted to put that bug in your ear that it might come to that where we have to replace a pump just to get through. Unfortunately, it would be just for a short period of time to get through this last bit of this part of the construction. So again, we're trying to avoid that at all costs right now, but it is, it does sometimes have a problem with that. We had another tree event the other night, and we had a few trees come down around town. I'm sure you guys saw a couple of them, one was at the pool. It tore up the fence pretty bad. I don't know if we can do a park and recs committee soon, that way we can take action to fix their fence down there. And then also some fencing up on the backside of the cemetery on Fort Street, up on top of the hill. So I believe we are going to need a whole lot of fence in addition to it down there at the park to do that up there, just to mend it up, but we'll be squared away with the fencing.
Scott, how soon do you need to park track?
I would like to get that fence tidied up sooner than later. I don't know if you've seen it down there, there's a top rail that's exposed, which we could cut off, but it's still going to be exposed. And we got barricades around it to, you know, to signal the dangerous area. But sooner than later would be great, maybe the first part of next week.
I think everybody's saying...
I'm the only one. I'm at it right now, at this very moment.
I'd like to see you get the fencing fixed so people from the crane can buy refreshments. So...
If we're going to do that, do it all at one time?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's just get it, just get it fixed.
And we didn't have enough money, because I didn't forget the first time.
I just make a motion, we do that, and before we go to the committee meeting, everybody's there.
Yeah.
And we'll have to bring in an appropriation if necessary.
Yeah, get us, get a...
Want to set it to finance?
I think it...
Think, we need to get a figure.
Depending on the quote, it may need an appropriation. There's some money to work with, I think thirty-five hundred maybe.
Get a figure together and email us all tomorrow and then...
You bet.
Motion to what?
I'm motioning to go ahead and fix the fence, and then we'll bring the appropriation ordinance in later.
Whatever.
Yes.
We know needs to fix it. Is it going to be under, what's the...
I don't think the fence is past.
It's going to be close for that.
You think it will?
No, it's just a section of it, isn't it?
The little bit of fence that we did replace down there and put a gate in, so we put a small section, a six-foot fence down inside the pool area, and that was, I believe, sixteen hundred dollars, but I'm shooting from the hip memory-wise, because it's the commercial grade.
Mine, mine around my house is over sixty-five hundred dollars. But that's one fence, so.
I don't see how thirty-five hundred ain't going to cover it.
I would think that would cover it as well.
Yeah, make, let's just get it fixed. Why don't you just go a motion to authorize the owner to transfer money necessary to cover it?
That's what I was talking about.
There we go. I'm second.
Can you reword that again, sorry?
The owner is authorized to transfer money around to cover the fence cost. Council, I understand council will appropriate the money.
But I'd sure like to see the people riding a crane be able to walk out and buy a cover.
Yeah, sounds good.
Just one second.
I do.
So that's if it's over thirty-five hundred, right?
Right, right. Scott, please send us, we got more to...
We got to take a vote on that.
Oh.
My second, don't get...
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Appreciate it, we'll get after that quickly.
All right.
And so I want to give an update on the water line. So the original water line that I came and asked council for shortly after you folks put me in here, that was a carryover from my predecessor, and we sent it out for bid, we had multiple bids come back. We had one for fifty-eight thousand, one for, I think, seventy or eighty, and one came in at a hundred and ten. And once Jason spun me up on exactly what's needed to bore and actually brought those companies back and explained to them what the material was they were going to be boring into, the price shot over four hundred thousand. So with that being said, we have got quotes to replace the water line exactly how it sits in the river now. We've already got one quote come in for thirty-six thousand. I don't, the only thing I have to do in order to make that happen is two things. Number one, I bring it to your attention, and the second one is I got to get the, our permit changed, because we have a permit now. However, I can't do anything and can't do that exact same thing until the permit is amended. But we just got that quote in today, or over the weekend, rather.
That's that second line that's busted?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a twelve-inch.
Twelve-inch.
Going across Hawking.
So we can pull out the old one. So the guys tried to go down there, which was really nice, fire department went down, and all the guys from the utility shop, they went down. And they tried, they bought a special clamp, trying to get that to do it, but the old pipe is just beaten so badly that there was no way that they could get it to stick on there. But the price of thirty-six thousand to go across the, where the existing one is, is half the price of what we originally asked for, as long as the permitting folks will allow it. You know, I would like to move forward with your blessing.
Wow, I'll tell you what, that would be four hundred thousand dollars, that would have been something to get into that.
The problem with that is, is you're going to go under the river like six feet, so therefore you could take a chance of fracking in the river. And that wouldn't have been good. So you got to get down these twenty feet for, you know, that river.
So, and then you asked about the civil service commissioner earlier. The two names I have is Terry Coons and Angie Booth that want to be on the civil service commission.
I would give you three, wouldn't it?
I would give you three.
Yeah.
Okay, who's the other one on there, Wolf, Chris Wolf?
Yes.
Okay.
He's the existing member now.
Yes, correct, sir.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and accept those people.
I second that.
Because that way we can get our civil service...
Up to snuff.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
There we go.
All right, anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
So the police chief has recommended three names to hire within the police department. Of course, that's conditioned upon the test and everything else. The three names he sent forward, or the three names he recommended to me was KJ Tracy, who is currently on the Middleport Police Department down in, or down in Middleport. Comes highly recommended, top of his class. Then we have Mr. Ben Adams, who currently works at the Athens County Courthouse. Also comes highly recommended. And then Mr. Alex Mount is our current part-time employee, he's been doing really good for us. And we'd like to move him up. Of course, this is, we have the test to do, it's provisionally, we have the test, and then also they're pending physical as well.
Have we had background checks on it?
I'm sorry?
Have we had background checks on it?
Yes, sir, as far as I'm aware. I don't know exactly which one, I know the Nelsonville one, nothing came back because they're not from around here. Is there a specific one I could get back to you?
We were having a firm re-background checks.
I call them.
All of them. Everybody.
Yeah.
Because we ran into a problem, what, a couple of years ago, Gary? That we didn't know about.
That's the one, Chief Barber just filled me in, that Hawking College does those for us, so. I'll confirm with Chief, but I do believe that everything is squared away.
So these are all provisional, pending the test?
Test.
I make a motion on the condition they pass the background check at their approval, council.
Well, they have to pass all the other two, they have to pass.
Well, let's just wait till, right?
Yeah.
Wait till the proper time?
Yes.
Are these full-time or private?
We, so correct me if I'm wrong, we can't even put them on the books.
Until we...
Right, and then with the three exits that we have, we're going to be in a bind if we don't start.
Well, I thought we could put them on the books as provisionally.
Well, you mean by provisionally, you can do six...
Well, hiring them provisionally.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you can hire them provisionally, once you're ready to hire them. Council, council has to approve the hire. But I'm just saying, I'm fine with hiring them as long as their background checks come back all right.
I think that's what you're asking now, though, to hire them, correct?
Yes, sir.
Most tired.
And I agree with you, Greg, I think they need to pass the background.
Yes.
And all the other stuff too, so, yeah.
I'll follow the numbers.
I have one more question, what happens if we pass it now and it doesn't come back?
When you hire them, it's far more...
Well, they can't, they would have to be terminated if they don't pass them.
They don't have the background check.
They don't matter as provisionally.
Alex Mount is currently on our part-time, he would just fall back to part-time.
Provisional, can be...
I'm going to hire you and hire you in a few months.
Well, Alex has already passed the background check.
Yeah.
We can have the other two done tomorrow, the other two background checks are easy.
Okay.
Okay. All right, yes, second.
Don't look at me, Dan, it's me.
I can't.
Alex is also in charge of foot races, our foot chases.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be tapped by him.
I don't want to be tapped down by him.
Motion to hire pending background checks?
Yes.
Second. Well, I'm thinking all other requirements will be done.
Yeah, all requirements, yeah.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
One more, and then I'm done. I would like to request permission to create a policy for police employment, a police employment agreement in conjunction with the chief of police. What that would look like is, in the event that we hire these young folks and they leave prior to two years, then they would reimburse partially, it's pro-rated, depending on how much time they spend here, but money spent on them to get them in here. So currently, it takes us about thirty-six hundred dollars to get a new guy, girl, on the books. And what this would do, if, we're essentially looking at galpluses, they already have it in place down there. And it's up to, it's just reimbursing for a part of the uniforms and the physical that we spend on them if they leave before the two-year mark, if I'm correct.
Is that legal to do that?
That is legal, but I would prefer you do it by an ordinance. If you want to do a motion notifying them now that you're going to do that, but I think it should be done by an ordinance, not just a motion. Yeah, okay. I would regard the policy as really an ordinance with council, it's going to think they have to...
So that can be...
But it is legal to do that, yeah.
So that can be discussed in the police and fire meeting this week and it won't be tied up for that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will that be a time for your new police?
And honestly, if you're going to do it in this department, you should probably do it in all the departments. That would be my opinion.
Yeah, it should be all across the board.
Yeah, it should be all across the board.
No, I think that's great, because we do spend on new hires a lot of money to get them outfitted.
Even in the service department, I expect you spend.
Absolutely, the winter gear and everything else.
Gary, would you consider using the same timeframe, like if it's two years for the police, would it be the same or?
It costs different amounts for the different departments. They set different amounts.
Yeah, police and fire is a lot more expensive to outfit than the service department. I would think, you know, it's up to you guys how much, you know, you think you even want to get out of somebody before you leave.
I think you, you want to, you want to prevent people planning to jump.
I don't want to use it as a training ground, which don't want to happen.
Yeah, well, it's always going to happen because.
Well, then they can pay back.
But, well, because of the money that we pay is, is a lot lower than other places. And we had people from the Nelsonville Police Department that ended up being civil, our secret service agents and FBI agents and through the years, so.
Well, the other.
In that way, we can compete with that kind of pay.
The other thing that should happen is they should be, and I've already talked to Scott, they should be required to return their equipment and stuff to us, because some of it can obviously be reused or is.
They always, you already do?
Uh, in theory, we do, I don't know that that's actually happened in the past.
Okay. Good, I like that idea to have it across the board, so.
Yeah.
And I'll bring galpluses template, and then we'll leave it there. And then the last thing I wanted to share, an easy one?
He said what?
I know.
Yeah, I know. He's like Becky.
Speaking of Becky, she's our employee of the month for June.
Ah, nice.
Who's June?
Yeah, it's June. So, she's been doing great work, she's been out there, you know, unfortunately, it's a very unpopular job that she does. But the, the city looks a lot better because of it, and it's continuously improving, and I.
It's all a high street project, looks great.
That was a joint effort, if you will, between her and Mr. Wasserman, you know, and the land bank and then HAPCAP. So we actually have a few more of those in the pipeline to be tore down in the very near future. And then especially if we're able to, you know, sell some of our properties off and such to different investors. So I'm really excited how that's going, and she's been spearheading all that.
No. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have any updates on the manhole there on Washington?
Absolutely. So we just got the parts in last week, if I recall, and Jason's scheduling it in as, going forward. So I know it's happening very, very soon, I don't have the exact date, but I can ask him for an exact date tomorrow and email that out to you.
I just wondered how it was coming.
It took forever to get the parts in from the time you guys appropriated to the time we ordered and then when they actually showed up, so they were way behind schedule.
That's good, because it looks really bad.
Looks a little treacherous.
Yes.
Parts everywhere are hard to get, regardless of what they are.
Yes, indeed. Hence our audio problems.
Right. All right, well, thank you for, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. We're to the good of the order.
All right. Mr. Sherman?
Congratulations to the fire department for once again a successful fireworks show. I was there, it was pretty cool. And just everybody be safe out there, that COVID-19 is spreading quick.
I don't think that's a Taylor.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
I would, I would like to, I had a family issue this week. I had a family member break a hip, and I'd like to thank the fire department for responding very nicely to this, this lady. It was a very difficult situation, and they handled it very well. I, I appreciate that, so, thank you very much.
I would just like to remind everyone to please fill out the census with our budget the way it is if we lose all that funding. I don't know, I don't even have words for what we're having. We lose all that funding.
When we start going door-to-door, when, when does that, when does that kick in?
Well, census workers are going door-to-door in the towns with all P O boxes. So if you don't have a physical, mailable address, they go to every door like Bookdole and Chancy. And then they're supposed to move on to people who haven't responded in towns like ours afterwards. But they actually prefer that if you don't have, you don't have to have the full training, you don't be employed by the census, but they'd like you to have the training from somebody employed by the census. Pretty much any day now.
Do you know what, is it still just at fifty percent or do you know?
It's at fif, it's exactly fifty as of today, well, yesterday, I took it yesterday. But, um, but the deadline keeps getting moved back too. I mean, the normal census is done, the last day is May first or something, and it's back to all the way to October thirtieth, I think, so. At third, I don't know.
Is there a number?
It's getting dicey, is what I'm saying.
Is there a number of people can call if they're having trouble figuring out how to do it? Because there might be people that would go ahead and do it, but they don't know how, they've lost their, they lost their form, they lost their whatever, and they need to make a contact to someone to come help them or.
I mean, honestly, they, they, if, I, I don't have the, I don't have the, our regional reps' phone number, but, I mean, they can call city hall. We can help them here.
Well, can we have them call your office?
Yeah.
We can, they also.
Give a phone number out right now, so if people want to get some help, you can get some help to them.
Yeah, mine's twenty-two, thirty-three, so seven.
Seven, five, three, twenty-two, thirty-three?
Yeah. And so we've gone to training, I have at least, over the, filling it out, I haven't gone the door-to-door training, but.
Well, at least we, at least if we get their name and their, and some contact information, we can get somebody to them.
Right.
Because I, I think one of this happens, a lot of people have lost their mailing.
Yeah.
And you say, please fill it out, and they go, I don't got it anymore.
Right.
So if they, if you're in that situation, then you need to hang, call twenty-two, thirty-three?
Yeah. And if they're online savvy, honestly, they can just Google the census.
Well, you can help them with that if they call, somebody can say, here, let me walk you through it.
Yeah, I was going to ask, Scott, could we put a link on our Facebook page and just so if they want to go to the city, they, they click the link and take them right to it.
Roger.
The thinking in the group was, when we started back in the spring, it got interrupted by the pandemic like everybody else. But the thinking was that we could match twenty-ten's response rate, which was fifty-nine point nine, that we thought we were safe. Our population would drop a couple hundred, but it would be fifty-one hundred, we were hoping. And if anything above was just gravy at that point. But like we said, we're sitting at fifty exactly, so we're at least nine point nine below where we'd like to be with only a few months to close.
Okay. So, okay, we'll talk about this later.
Okay.
We need to be prepared in case we need to go door-to-door or we need someone.
Yeah.
Who's trained in that, and.
I've heard stories of prior.
There, there is.
Going in two thousand.
I've spoken to a few people in the community, and they're, they would be willing to go door-to-door. I mean, so, let's see where we're at, okay? Great. Now, good, the order's good?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.